It is 7:00 PM. Clerk Scott, I'm gonna go ahead and start, if that's okay?
Yes.
Then for Hirschfeld, because this way we can go ahead and let folks know how they can be signing in to the public comment or to the public hearing.
Yeah, I don't like that one. It makes me feel like I am in a... I hate that. It scares me.
I'm gonna start by asking everybody to mute yourselves. Just so...
And do a little start, remember?
Actually, Melissa's friend.
Ashley, would you like me to mute everyone?
Yeah, could you do that? That would be helpful.
You will have to unmute yourself.
Thank you. That was good. Hello, everybody. It is 7:01 PM. We're gonna go ahead and get this meeting started. Welcome to the Greenfield City Council meeting. We're still in our virtual mode, and I believe we're broadcasting live on GCTV, so thank you so much to our public television station for providing that service to us. Today is June 17th of 2020, and this is our 206th regular meeting. We said the time is 7:01 PM, and yeah, so I'm gonna call this meeting for order at 7:01 PM. This meeting is being recorded and videotaped by recorded and videotaped by the City Council and GCTV-15. If anyone else here tonight is doing the same, please notify me at this time.
Kathy speaking.
Yep. Okay, and with that being said, we will go ahead and Clerk Scott will do a roll call of members.
Councillor Jarvis?
Here.
Councillor Gwynn will not be attending tonight. Councillor Disorder?
Present.
Councillor Bottomley?
Here.
Councillor Dolan?
I am here.
Thank you. Councillor Gilmore?
Here.
Councillor Gilmore?
Here.
Thank you. Councillor Wheeler?
Here.
Councillor Mayo?
Here.
Thank you. Councillor, so I am currently on the phone with Councillor Hirschfeld, trying to help him get connected, but he has not joined the meeting yet. Councillor Elmer?
Here.
Councillor Forgé?
Here.
Councillor Ricketts?
Here.
President Stumpel?
Present.
Madam President, you have a quorum.
Great. So before we move any forward, I want to do a few things. So first, we have members of the public here. It's so great to see you all signed into this very unusual format of council meetings. So thank you for attending and each one of your day for being here. So how we do public comment in this virtual space is similar, but a little different, obviously. So we have what I call our virtual time book. Teo Drake, if you could... Thank you. I really thank you. I feel so bad asking people to do that. So the way we're gonna sign in, our chat box, so that's our virtual sign-in. And so if you wanna go ahead and write your name and your address in the chat box, when it comes time to public comment, that's how I'll call on you. You have three minutes to speak. You'll come off mute, and you will address the council. So that is how we've been doing that. And I don't know, I'm sure there's more people here tonight for public comment than there might be for the public hearing. If you just so happen to be here for the public hearing, and Emily, we're gonna also ask that you put in your address so that the clerk can have a record. But also, if you're here for the public hearing, which is unlikely, I imagine you're all here for the public comment, but if you are here for the public hearing, if you can just note that, so then I will call on you to speak to the public hearing when that time is right. Okay, any questions? No questions. Great. I see folks signing up. That's wonderful. Thank you so much. Next, before the Pledge of Allegiance, I did want to say a few things. In a moment, I'm gonna ask us to take just a moment of silence, and not just for George Floyd, but for the many who came before and are sure to come after if change is not made. And so that, in a moment. First, what I wanna say is as communities across the country, including our own, come together to protest and educate each other on the systemic racism and violence against Black and Brown Americans, I just wanna say that I speak for myself. I speak for, I think, the council. I don't wanna put words in anyone's mouth, but just the sentiment I've heard over the past few days that I commit to continuing to listen, to learn, and to build community for all residents and visitors to our city. And I also want to share one of my favorite quotes, because standing for the Pledge of Allegiance means something, and right now, it may feel tough. And so what I wanna say is one of my favorite quotes from James Baldwin. "I love America more than any other country in this world, and exactly for this reason, I insist on the right to criticize her perpetually." I think we can all agree that we can do better and that we must do better. And so with that being said, I invite, and it's voluntary, folks to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. And like I said, it's voluntary. You can come off mute. You can say muted.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic with which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. And next, before we move on to our communications for town department heads, I do want to make note that there is a community-led forum being planned in partnership with members of the community, members of social justice organizations, and community leaders to create a space for that continued learning, shared dialogue, and really building off that momentum from our protests and decide what action makes sense moving forward for our community. And so once we do hold those details, we'll be sure to share them out as far as we probably can. So with that being said, I'm going to move forward with item four on our meeting agenda tonight. It feels challenging to transition from that to approval of minutes, but here we are. So we are on page three of our agendas. Do I hear a motion to approve meeting minutes from the May 13th, May 20th City Council meetings?
So I make a motion, Ricketts?
Second, Gilmore.
Who made the move? Who moved that? Was that Councillor Elmer?
Yes.
Okay, moved by Elmer. I heard second by Ricketts. Any discussion? Say none. We will vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any oppositions? Hearing none. Absentions? Hearing none. Unanimous positive. Next, we will have communications, please, from the Superintendent and School Committee.
Chair Peretti, do you wanna begin?
Oh, I was hoping you would begin, but I can start. Would you prefer that? Yeah. Good evening, everyone. Thank you, President Stumpel, for the opportunity to address you all. I wanna touch on a couple of things related to school committee business right now. We had, we had a meeting last week, a regular meeting for the month of June, and we talked a little bit about state timelines and state realities right now in terms of funding. And I wanna make sure that the public is aware that we really don't have a lot of information to go on in terms of the Chapter 70 funding that we'll get, if we'll get any Student Opportunity Act funding at all. And you put on top of that that we have public health realities that are coming forward, that are gonna necessitate spending that we didn't anticipate, and reopening in the fall on any sort of timeline that the state is working with now is gonna be very challenging because they haven't given us timely information about guidelines for public health or funding. So it's really tough to know how to proceed. I've been having some conversations today that I have yet to even discuss with the superintendent, with Vice Chair Ekstrom, around budget ideas for next year. And we'll be talking about those shortly, likely calling a budget subcommittee meeting in the near future. We all have really tough decisions to make, and I wanna acknowledge that being in a pandemic is bad enough. We are in unprecedented times, as I've said over and over and over again. And we're being challenged every day to make decisions that have no basis in past experience for most of us, and it's incredibly challenging. And then on top of that, we have a very disturbing local incident that mirrored very disturbing national incidents around issues of racism, institutional racism, and police violence, and those conversations are front and center with the school committee and the school department as well. I have heard a little grumbling of criticism that the school committee and the school department haven't come out and said that we are anti-racism and we haven't supported things that are going on. And I want to really address that we've operated for many, many years on policies that are anti-discrimination and anti-racism, and we do our best to implement things that mirror what our students need to see based on their experience, their home environments, and their ability to learn at any level. And I'm not, this is a long-winded way of me saying that, I'm not I'm not fulfilled in my duties as the chair of the school committee and just moving forward with a statement that we're anti-racism. We're actively talking about moving well beyond that and having real conversations throughout the community. It isn't enough to come out and mark the checkbox that says, oh, yep, the school committee said they're anti-racism, the police department said they are, and move through a checklist of that. We have to do better, and we have to start actual solution-oriented conversations across the community. And I'm very dedicated to putting the school committee front and center in doing that work, and I welcome conversations with residents about that. And that is my statement, and I'll move on to giving the floor to the superintendent. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, councillors. Good evening to the public that's present. Hopefully you can see me okay, and the sun's not. There you go. I wanna touch on a few things tonight, and mostly I want to be brief because there is so much public comment, and I think that's really to be commended and applauded. And I just wanna start by saying that the only way forward as a community here in Greenfield and on a broader level is to listen to one another and to have a dialogue. Speaking for myself and the school system, we all have a lot to learn, myself personally, the school as a system, individual teachers within it, but all of us as a community. And I think that we have an opportunity right now to be engaged in these conversations, so I'm looking forward to participating in the city dialogue. The school committee has voted to have a forum on race and dialogue at that level. Next week, at the high school, we're having our second restorative justice circle around racial equity. The first one, there was some issue with the communication that went out, so not all families were aware of it, and we're continuing those dialogues over the summer with students with access to Chromebook. I do wanna say on the topic of restorative justice that this is not new. This is not a fad, and this is not anything that should be given passing notice and then moved on from. The restorative practice work at the high school has been going on for some time, about five years now, and the commitment to this work from all of us, including the schools, needs to be deepened and continued, and as the chair said, I think the community in general and those of us that are educators are interested in what actions can we help so that the next generation of students doesn't experience the same obstacles that affect our students today? And issues like this in society don't affect any one group of students only or people only. This is a situation where we are all better together when we stand up for one another. So I just wanna say that at the outset. I'd like to talk about remote learning briefly. We just concluded our school year, and we are in the process of finalizing a survey that will go out to parents. And also, we're gathering the same kind of input from staff about what worked well and what didn't in remote learning. I'll be the first to say, nobody actually likes remote learning. Nobody, nobody went to school to become a teacher, at least in a brick-and-mortar school. There are people that do this professionally, and it's a very different type of work. Nobody that works in a school building went to school to become a remote learning teacher. We care about seeing kids and our relationships with kids. And in this COVID situation, and everybody behind their screens right now, it is the relationships that suffer, and even the dialogues that we're having, I think you can see people are short with each other. They're testy with each other. Everybody's on a scale of one to 10, they're at a 13, all right? And it doesn't actually help us learn from each other. And so I'm gonna ask everybody to just double down on your commitment to listen, and I'll ask that of myself at least. And finally, I just wanna comment briefly on the question about training at the high school. I'm hearing from some members of the community that it is troubling to have a training from the sheriff's office located at the high school. I know some councillors have inquired about this. I wanna say that I am sensitive to the concern from the community and that we were asked essentially to be good partners with some neighboring community organizations, including the sheriff's office, who's done a lot of good things for our schools. And I don't say this to endorse or support or in any way comment on the content of the training at the high school, because it's not affiliated with the schools in any way, shape, or form. But the sheriff's office has been using that building for training, and I'm in communication with the sheriff and have brought any concerns that have come to my attention, I've brought to the sheriff, because the content of that training is under the jurisdiction of the sheriff's office. And if there are any concerns that could be addressed because they affect the Greenfield Public Schools students, family, or in any way violate a policy or a law, I would like to personally know about it so I can follow up on it. But my understanding at this point is that the sheriff's office is handling those concerns and looking into them personally. And I just wanna make clear to the community that we hear and understand, especially in today's climate, that everyone is concerned and alert and aware, and rightly so, and that the school's role is essentially allowing public use of a public building for public use that's not affiliated with the schools. So I just wanna clarify that. It doesn't in any way endorse any content of it anymore than, you know, when an orchestra uses that space. So if there are specific concerns, I really welcome direct dialogue, myself, school committee. We are very responsive to those types of concerns, and I just encourage you to bring anything. If you feel like something's being overlooked in any aspect of the schools, I encourage you to bring it directly to the people in the schools that are empowered to do something about it, because there's a lot of us that care an awful lot, and we want to help. And that brings us to the budget and the reduction in force. And boy, we have really good people, and it's really hard to hand out pink slips to people that you know we need to be in front of our students to open the school year. That was a lot of pink slips. We had a $1.8 million reduction from the school committee budget to get to the mayor's budget, and we always balance to the budget that is set by this council, and that's what we did. In addition, in this particular year, we don't have any idea what the state budget is going to be, and there's no guarantee, as the chair said earlier, about state funding. And that means that we have to be cautious about not committing to pay salaries of people that we cannot actually guarantee there are funds to pay, because that would be irresponsible to the local taxpayer to shoulder a burden when you have no state revenue to pay for it. It is a very difficult position to be in, and communities all across Massachusetts are feeling this pain right now. There are deadlines in contracts and in the law that tell you when you have to issue notice by, and for most districts, that's June 5th or June 15th. And so that's what has just happened across the Commonwealth. When the state budget is released, we sincerely hope that we are able to recall all of the staff that were issued reduction in force or RIF notices. That means anybody that was in the last year that they were here, pretty much. They were hired in the last year, and they were given a notice that we may not be able to employ you again in the next year. All of those people are necessary staff. They're guidance councillors. They're school nurses, science teachers. They're people that we can't operate without. And the reduction in force has nothing to do with saying we don't want them. It has everything to do with... There is a 10% to 20% projected decrease in state revenue, and we simply have no idea if federal aid or state aid will come through to make schools whole. On top of that, as the chair said, most districts are expecting $1 to $2 million of costs associated with COVID alone. And the school committee will be taking up two resolutions to address this. One is that there should be no unfunded mandates for COVID-related costs coming from local communities. It's just not fair to ask local taxpayers to pay for health supplies and PPE and things that hospitals should have coming out of children's textbook money and teachers' salaries. The second is a social justice statement that the school committee will be undertaking in addition to the previous votes that were taken that affirm the commitment to social justice, and the school committee will be taking up that resolution as well. These are really important advocacy points, and for people that care about social justice and equity, you need to understand that school funding is an equity issue that disproportionately affects low-income and minority students, and that students who need to see themselves represented in teachers of color need the funding to keep and keep secure funding for the staff that we have, because where we've worked to recruit teachers of color, they're often the ones that are let go because they were the most recently hired. It's disproportionately impacting our students and our staff in a way that's not fair. So if you're listening tonight and you care about those issues, I really encourage you to take up requests to state and federal level about funding for schools related to COVID, and pay attention to the school committee resolutions as we talk about that. And then everyone wants to know the model for the fall. What's it going to be? As the chair said, we have no guidance, as we sit here tonight, from the Department of Education, about what the model for next fall is, but we are being told that there will be a model that we're asked to follow. So while we are planning for many possible options, we're not saying this is the particular model. I will say that it is almost entirely unlikely that all students can go all days to school in person. There will be a remote component, and that is because we have to follow whatever health guidelines are in place at the time. So I'm giving an example. This is not current because we have no guidance at this moment. But if they said 10 students in a class with one teacher, and there's 23 students regularly in the class, obviously, they cannot all be in the classroom at the same time, and I think people understand this. So here's the natural consequence of laying people off when you need more staff and smaller class sizes. It is a challenge. We're trying to work around it, and again, it all hinges on state aid. I think I'll leave it there unless there are questions. I just want you to know that we have a group working on this, and we'll be responsive to the Department of Ed information as it comes out, and we're working to continue to update families over the summer. We know this is anxiety-producing. I'm a parent myself. We understand that people need childcare. We want children in school as much as possible, but it's our job to get them there safely and to also protect teachers. We're working with the teachers' union to make sure we do this safely. So I'm sorry, it's a bit of, there's a lot to say because it's awfully complicated. And we wanna mostly say that we miss the students. We miss being in person, and we miss doing what we do best, which is creating the community that is learning and being in school together. And I ask that everybody just bear with us. We're certainly doing our best, no matter what we do. Somebody says it's too much. Somebody says it's too little. And we ask for your patience and forgiveness as we try to do what we think is best for children and keep people safe. It's a healthcare issue, and we're not healthcare experts, but we are doing our best to take expert advice and to turn it into common sense and things that work well. And we're trying to coordinate regionally, because if you have children in Greenfield but you work elsewhere, we understand that this is a systems approach. And so I'm working with all of my colleagues and at the state level to try to coordinate as much as possible. So you may not see the results of that work, but we're focused on the action more than the communications about the action. And while that may be frustrating to some, we don't have communication staff. We don't have a lot of staff at the administrative level. I do a lot of it personally, so if you're mad at somebody, you can blame me. But we have tried to prioritize keeping staff in classrooms over some of those additional positions that are really being taxed right now. So thanks, everybody, for your patience. I apologize for so much information.
Never apologize for so much information. Thank you so much, Superintendent. I just wanna acknowledge that Councillor Hirschfeld has joined the meeting. Welcome. And I see that Councillor Ricketts has a question.
Thank you, President Stumpel. So I just want to thank Chairwoman Peretti and Superintendent Harper, because, you know, when we get up in the morning and we read headlines, we see the layoffs, and we are saddened, and we think that's all that's going on. But we do understand, or I hope people understand, that you are trying to put in the work to follow up on the racism and forums. I do watch all the school committee meetings, so I am paying attention, and it is tough stuff. And due to the pandemic, it's amazing that you have continued to meet as much as you do. And as much as parents, people, may not have liked the remote learning, the one thing that I felt good about was that the student was still being touched base with. There was something there. So now the summer is a scary time without knowing the teacher, knowing someone is checking in on that person now. And without camps and the daycare situation, it's all over the place. So my heart really goes out to students right now of every color, socioeconomic background, everything. This is our students' mental health I'm talking about right now. So I plead with the community that when anything arises, or you have a question about anything, to please reach out directly to someone that you can get answers from. I mean, I love Facebook, too. And but let's try to get it right to Chairwoman, or to the superintendent, or the police department, or the sheriff's department. Let's go to the appropriate bodies so we can get answers quicker, and then we could move forward. Let's go to the appropriate bodies so we can get answers quicker and then we could move forward. Because we're the adults, we're the role models for the students, for our children. So let's, let's show what real communication looks like. And again, thank you so much for all your work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Ricketts.
Councilor Gilmore also has some questions.
Thank you. Um, I have a few. So I want to say first off to Superintendent Harper that I appreciate how difficult this is. And I know that right now you've kind of been stuck in a game of hot potato and you, you got stuck with the potato. And, you know, I, I work in higher ed and I know that funding is really, we're, we're concerned about what's going to happen with our students in the fall. And I know that with K-12 students, there's a, a very different situation because there's a legal obligation to educate younger folks, whereas with young adults, you know, they pay tuition and they have to be admitted and I couldn't imagine what you must be going through. So that being said, um, I am concerned about how these staff reductions are going to impact reopening in the fall. It seems to me that, um, seeing what my, my children have been going through, you know, sort of, do, you know, working on remote learning and, you know, getting the support that they need. I, I wonder what these reductions are going to do for our students. And I also would like to know what the city council can do to support you and to set our students up for success.
Thank you so much, Councilor Gilmore, uh, and thank you to Councilor Ricketts for your previous comments. These are really good questions. Again, it's hard to say precisely because if we had the guidance today, we could, uh, do this sort of arithmetic. I like to tell people it's like all the adults are being asked MCAS questions. If any of you are familiar with the types of questions that the state tests ask our students, there are a lot of word problems that are long and complicated in multiple parts, but some of them sound like, well, if you had, you know, 350 students in a building and, you know, 27 staff members and you need a staffing ratio of, uh, it's a little bit that problem. But it unfortunately it's not humorous because it's, it's quite complicated and it's people's health and, uh, people's wellbeing at stake. The, the short answer is fewer staff with smaller class sizes and more people with fragile health conditions is a concern. At this point, it's hard to tell families exactly what the plan will be. So it's hard to ask families to commit to returning to school. We know that some families may feel unsafe sending their children to school, no matter what the option is. And they may want to have an option where they are, um, schooling remotely because they feel it's safer. We know that some families want the opposite and want to be in person to the greatest extent possible so that they can attend to work or other obligations. And that sets up a difficult challenge, which is we have to plan for all contingencies with a reduced number of staff. So when we have the guidance from the department and when we have a budget, we'll be able to tell you exactly what the impact is, but common sense says it's not good.
Sorry, I couldn't unmute myself. I, or I guess. Um, thank you very much. Are there any other questions from councilors to either superintendent or chair of the school committee? Seeing none. Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Thank you, President Stumpel. Thank you all. Take care. Be well.
Thank you.
Next, uh, we have communications, please, from the mayor, uh, city officers or other employees.
Not sure. Is Mayor Weidner here tonight?
I am here.
I am here and unmuted.
Hello, everyone, and, uh, thank you to Chair Proetti and Superintendent Harper for making my job a little bit easier tonight, uh, because they led the way on, uh, the extraordinary uncertainty that we're facing right now, um, with regard to the budget. So I will only touch on that briefly and I will try to make my comments brief. We are a ship without a mooring uh, at this point in time, uh, in the city of Greenfield. And I don't mean that the city of Greenfield isn't stepping up to the plate and doing what it needs to do to get us back on track. I just mean that we are getting very little input from the state on, um, our budget. And at the end of the day, whether you like it or not, um, the funding that comes from the state and comes from the federal government is what assists us in providing all of our services, not just the schools, but everywhere else, uh, in the city, whether it's your trash pickup, your, um, fire, uh, response, your police response, all of those things. We have a budget, uh, in place and I am grateful for that. Um, and I am grateful for the, um, uh, as difficult as it was, uh, the school committee's part and the superintendent's part in meeting that budget. I, like everybody else, do not like to see reductions in force, uh, particularly in the schools. But at the end of the day, some of these things are not in our control per se. We have to balance our budget. We have to ensure that we provide as many services as we can to the people and we have to do it within the ability to pay, as it, as we say. So, um, that said, uh, we don't know where we're going, uh, forward in terms of the budget until we hear what the governor's budget has, um, landed or what the legislature has deemed is appropriate for the governor's budget, whether we get Chapter 70 funding and all of those things that, um, the previous speakers, uh, outlined. With that said, we will do our best to, uh, meet everybody's, all of the obligations that we have to the taxpayer. And I just want everybody who's listening to understand that. These are extraordinary, really extraordinary times. And I think people get tired of hearing that, but I can tell you for sure that it is true. It is not where I planned for us to be on, uh, June 17th, 2020, but it is where we are. And until the, um, more or less the end of July, we will not know what our final budget is and what we are capable of doing. And I know there have been, um, particular, uh, demands made on us, that I don't know if we can even meet, uh, with regard to our budgeting. So I will, um, I will know more in a few weeks. But I have very con, I'm very confident in the people that, um, assist me in running the city of Greenfield, our department heads, our finance department. They are, um, highly professional and they know what they're doing and, and they provide me with a great deal of insight and advice. So at the end of the day, we will come back to you at some point in the near future with regard to the budget. And it will be, um, our best, uh, recommendation on how we go forward. With all that said, which sounded a little bit on the doom and gloom side, I don't want to present the fact that we are doom and gloom. At the end of the day, it is how do we get our economy going? And our, I can tell you that we have been working diligently, uh, on our side to get our, um, restaurants open and providing both, uh, the ability for people to go out in this wonderful weather that we've been having and enjoy themselves. Uh, we have a very good plan coming, uh, forward for outdoor dining. I have to, um, commend our, uh, Economic Development Director, uh, MJ Adams for all the work that she's been doing, along with, um, Chief of Staff Danielle Letourneau and myself and a few others to put together our outdoor dining plan. And I think later in your agenda, you have the ability to help assist us with the changes in the zoning, uh, or in our ordinances that affect, um, all of the, um, ordinances on licensing and licensing for outdoor dining. And when we get to that point, I'm happy to answer whatever questions you have on that. But just know that we are working to make Greenfield as, um, open as we possibly can under the circumstances that we are dealing with. I do want to say that, uh, and this was one piece of good news that we got this week. It's, I'm going to have to go a little bit in the weeds, but we had the opportunity. Whenever we put together an emergency management plan such as this, uh, well, there has never been one such as what we've been dealing with. But, um, we have the ability to access federal funding in, uh, in lieu of, we have to spend the money go in, going in, but we get reimbursed later. And we get reimbursed from FEMA if it's a natural weather disaster, et cetera. So this is not a natural weather disaster. This is something quite different, but we still have FEMA funding out there. So all of the money that we've had to spend, that we've had to take out of the FY '20 budget, that we've had to spend towards fighting the pandemic, will go, um, on a, um, a report that is submitted to FEMA to get reimbursed. Unfortunately FEMA reimburses maybe not even one, two or three years later, sometimes as much as four years later. The federal government put together something called the CARES Act, the Federal CARES Act, in which we could put together, um, some expenses that we spent on fighting the pandemic from March till now. We took advantage of, that would be in an expedited way. We took advantage of that. And I'm happy to say, and in fact, I'm kind of blown away by the, by this fact, that we submitted that budget on deadline. Um, it was a few hundred thousand dollars for the expenses. We did not expect it to come in any way, shape or form fast because when the government tells you that they want to expedite, that might mean two years, not five. We got it within side of a week. So we have all of the things that we, all of the money that we spent from March until a couple of weeks ago when we submitted this, um, that was eligible under the Federal CARES Act, has been reimbursed to us. So it's a bit of good news, um, that I hope is reflected at the end of the day when we figure out where we are, um, with regard to our budget. And, uh, I don't think I have anything else to say. Well, I have several things to say about that, but, uh, further. But I think I will hold off until I have more detail for you. So, um, I appreciate the fact that in the last couple of weeks since we've had our last meeting, we had a very successful Black Lives Matter march. I was there. I didn't march because I have a, I'm a wounded bird. I have a wounded wing. But, um, I was definitely there on the common and I want to, um, acknowledge and congratulate and appreciate the organizers of that march who, uh, did a very excellent job of, um, getting out their message, speaking their mind. I was there. I was listening, as were other people. And I do want to commend, uh, the Greenfield Police Force for their assistance. I think it went very smoothly because they were able to block off roads and allow, uh, this to happen without any interference from the outside, uh, with people interrupting us, uh, and we allowed them to march. And I appreciate that very greatly. I wish I had been able to go along with them. I would have been more than happy to, but I wasn't able to at that time. So, um, uh, I'm, um, I think I'm done. Unless anybody has any questions.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, do councilors have any questions? Councilor Gilmore, please.
Before I get started, Councilor Stumpel, I just wanted, um, I have questions on, um, education funding and also about outside dining, but if we're going to talk about outside dining in more depth later, I can save that at your discretion.
Um, maybe we could get the questions out of the way and then we won't have the questions for later. So I, I think they go right ahead.
All right, perfect. Um, so my questions are for, um, Mayor Weida Gardner. So I'm really glad that that money came in so soon. That's, I, I think that's amazing that the government was able to move that quickly. So congratulations to you and all the staff for getting that in. I'm wondering, so now that that money has come in and we're really struggling with education funding, I'm wondering, I know that a lot of parents have contacted me recently. Um, a, a lot of them today, and I have not been able to respond to everybody because I've been working from home and, and was not free until 5:00. So folks are asking me if there are other places where we can reallocate funding from. Um, I know that some of the suggestions that have come to me, I know, just kind of don't really pass. I know that the, the realities of dealing with municipality are, are not overly simplistic. So, so maybe some of these suggestions are not the best course of action. But I think we should think about where we would reallocate funds from and if there are projects that could be put off until later, given that there's an emergency and that we do need to support our students. And finally, um, I've heard a few references to, um, the state and the, uh, Chapter 70 funding. Do we have a target date when we know what our, what our Chapter 70 funding is going to be? I know that's a lot of questions, but, uh.
Well, I'll answer the question of the date and, and my answer is the same as Chair Proetti gave you, no. Um, unfortunately, the state is not, and I'm in communication along with all the other mayors and, um, municipal leaders, uh, weekly, on a weekly call with the Lieutenant Governor and anybody else that is chosen. And that, that would be the Office of Administration and Finance and, and a couple of others that deal with the finance at the state level. Um, and, and, and no, they're not giving us any guidance. They're not giving us any timeframe. Uh, they're not giving us any reasons why they can't give us a timeframe. So, I mean, there is a, a budget, um, uh, for the state that includes Chapter 70 funding that is going through its process. The one thing I do know is that the House and Senate combined their, um, budget meetings, um, at the state level. So it's not like we have to wait for the House to make their recommendation and then we have to go through all of the Senate deliberations in the Senate to make their, uh, those. They're doing it jointly, which shortens the calendar. But I honestly, uh, cannot give you an answer to that question. We have no timeline, uh, even though we ask. And I'm, when I say we, I mean, the collective, we, all of the cities and towns on these meetings that I'm on are, when are you going to be able to give us some guidance so we know how to plan ahead for our budget cuts and where we might prioritize and where we might have to sadly, um, make reductions? So, um, that's my answer. My answer is, I don't know. Not a good answer, but it's the only one I've got. Sorry.
Unfortunately, yeah, I'm not, I'm not surprised to hear that, but I felt like I had to do my due diligence and ask.
Sure, I appreciate that.
But yeah, so it's concerning the outside dining. Um, I did receive an email from a constituent.
Councilor Gilmore, before you transition, I know that the superintendent and chairperson Peretti are also still on the call. And I just wanted to also open up your question to those two, kind of hijacking the, the spotlight from the mayor for a moment, but I just want to make sure all your questions are.
No hijack intended. Um, I just want to, I, I didn't know what the question was. I, I wanted to make sure that, uh, the president knew I was still on the call. The mayor's right, we don't have a timeline. You know, the only other thing that I would add, because we keep hearing that we're all in this together, is that we are, um, at our best when we lead our conversations with others with kindness. And we are all, uh, it's, it's as if we've all happened across a car accident in the road unexpectedly. Except it's a pandemic and it's a virus and nobody knows what to do. And our elected officials at all levels aren't necessarily doing their job in the best way either, but it doesn't help for us to be critical about those things. And I want to express that very, very clearly. What helps is to actually have dialogue. What helps is to say, you know what, I don't know. And I haven't heard that anyone else knows, but we're aware we need to figure it out and kind of, you know, lead those conversations in a productive way and not assume that everyone is poorly intended, that is trying to make decisions around things that we've never encountered before. That is the only thing that I would add. And thank you again for the time.
Thank you very much, Chair Peretti. All right, Counselor Gilmore, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but I just wanted to make sure any opportunity to answer your questions was available.
Oh, no, that's fine. And actually, I was not trying to say that I was not surprised that the mayor didn't have these answers. I'm saying I'm not surprised that the mayor wasn't getting these answers. And I think that those mean two different things. So as far as outside dining is concerned, we, I think a lot of us, or possibly all of us, received an email from a constituent who was concerned that outside dining could contribute to higher levels of exposure for people who do have health concerns. And I wanted to, I know that there were some, there were some plans outlined in the document that we received talking about what was possible. As a visual learner, I would really like to see if we had diagrams or photos or anything of these establishments and what we were putting in place. And I was wondering if that would be available soon? I think we're voting on it tonight, so maybe that question, the answer to that question is no. But I really want our businesses to succeed, but I also really want to make sure that people are safe. So I just wanted to ask and see if someone can answer that.
I see that Chief of Staff Danny Laterno has asked to speak, and I'm happy to turn that over to her. I appreciate the fact that you're a visual learner, because I guess I'm half of a visual learner as well, and I like diagrams. I did meet with M. G. today, and I will, I will say that we are, we are applying, by the way, and I did forget to mention this in my memo, but we are applying for what they're calling a FAST grant from the state to affect this very program. So I just want to make sure that people understand when we do this, it's not gonna come directly out of our budget. We are applying for as many grants as we can to get funding to affect outdoor dining. Do we have, Counselor Gilmore, a vision of how it could happen in Greenfield? No, I don't have those diagrams yet. Just know that we are on it and we're thinking about it. And your part tonight in doing the ordinances is going to be very important to making that a success. We are going to have those diagrams soon. And I think I'll stop there and let Danielle Laterno speak, if that's okay with you, President Stempel.
Before she gets started, I just want to say to Andrew Ritchie, yes, I will do that, but first I'll let the mayor finish.
I'm sorry, I guess I didn't understand.
I just had a chat box question, and so now I can pass it off to Dani.
Oh, okay, okay, thanks.
No worries.
All right, I think I'm unmuted, but can you hear me? I'm always skeptical about the earbud thing. Thank you. Yeah, so Counselor Gilmore, I have an answer for that. The answer is that the guidelines for outdoor dining, so this, all these changes are sort of based on some local things that we can do, these proposed changes, local things that we can do to help restaurants reopen. And they're based on some expedited guidance that the ABCC and the governor put out in the last few weeks regarding outdoor dining as a way to get restaurants back up and running before indoor is allowed, knowing that that is less safe. The guidance that we have received on all fronts from the state is all written. It's not diagrams. However, it does outline very careful guidelines in terms of spacing, number of people, when you have to put barriers up and when you do not. And I should point out that part of the approval process for outdoor dining here in Greenfield is already includes having the establishment create a plan. One of the changes I actually think that we asked for was not making it to scale, because that does make it difficult for small businesses, since not everybody has drafting software. But they can draw out a diagram, and that is required for the license to be approved, even though we've changed and actually got the Licensing Commission to approve the mayor making this kind of a faster streamlined administrative approach. They still have to give us the diagram. The full application diagram and the written information, as well as the certificates of insurance, has to be reviewed by the Health Department, the Fire Department, and Planning, as well as the mayor's office now, and then it will be ratified by licensing. So the answer is each individual establishment will have to give us their visuals, but the state didn't provide us with anything other than writing. So we're interpreting that. There is some concern that people gathering, you know, would increase the chance. But I think we are forced to take a calculated risk because if you look at the list of restaurants that work here in Greenfield, especially the ones with liquor licenses, the vast majority of those are locally owned, and those folks are our neighbors, and they have families too that they're trying to support. And coming out of this pandemic, we want to make sure that they're in the best shape possible to keep going. Additionally, in the beginning of this meeting, we were talking about funding for schools and other priorities. We definitely do rely on that. Three quarters of a percent of the meals tax, the 7% tax that you pay when you go to eat, we definitely are feeling the hit of not receiving that for the past few months. And the faster we can get that back up and running, the better. So we will be scrutinizing those. You know, all the officials in town are gonna take a look at it before it's approved. So yeah, good question, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for the mayor?
I just wanted to thank Danielle for that answer. And yes, I think that, to help answer your constituents' questions, Counselor Gilmore, it will be as safe as it possibly can be. And our plan includes partnering with the restaurants to ensure that they are providing as much sanitation and, you know, meeting the guidelines that are set out by the state. That is the partnership and the understanding that we will go into this with. So people will choose to take advantage of that outdoor dining, which is quite pleasant, or not. But at the end of the day, we will do everything we can to meet all of the guidelines that the state has put out. We have a very diligent Board of Health that will ensure that. So I think people will make their own decisions about whether to take advantage of it. But Danielle is most definitely correct. Part of the budget that we hope to rely on depends on reopening our economy as best we can. And that is the premise upon which the governor has done his whole reopening. He understands that this is true for all communities across the Commonwealth, not just in Greenfield. Ours is just a microcosm, and it's a little more difficult to recoup some of those costs than it is in other cities and towns. So we are doing what we can do for Greenfield, and I know that Greenfield is an extraordinarily resilient community, and we will, we will do our best.
Thank you, helpful.
That's it, unless there's other questions.
I am not seeing any questions in the chat box.
I have a question.
Sure, and I just, councilors, if you can, I just want to make sure I can see who's talking. And the easiest way to do that is to use the chat box. So who's asking to speak? Hello?
President.
Is this Counselor Mayo?
Welcome, Mayo. I just want to make one statement is that, yes, it is. I just wanted to say that the, we had, the Commission for Disability Access had a meeting that outside sitting, and whether or not it was gonna be accessible to, because some of it was gonna be in the parking lot of the Greenfield, and that we were very supportive of what we saw and what was presented at the meeting this week.
Just checking, did I lose everybody?
I'm here.
You did for a minute.
I'm still here, Ashley.
All right, our bandwidth is being a joy. Sometimes we run into this issue where there's too much going on at the same time. And so you'll notice that I took myself off video because, for whatever reason, I think that that helps the bandwidth.
Yeah, and the mayor is here as well. I'm off video for the same reason.
Right. And I'm sorry, Doug, did you, you kind of got cut off. Did you have a question, or was that just a comment? Counselor Mayo.
That was just a comment, President Stempel.
I just wanted to make sure if you had a question that it was answered. Any other comments for Russians? Seeing none, I'll take this opportunity. So we've had even more members of the community join us today. That is lovely. To sign up for public comment, if that is your wish, or to speak to the public hearing, I'm asking folks to use what I call our virtual sign-in book. So that is the chat box. And so if you haven't signed in yet and you would like to speak during our public comment, I ask that you please write your name and your address into the chat box, and I will address you in the order that you have signed in to speak tonight during public comment. And secondly, I ask that if you are trying to have time to speak specifically to the public hearing items, to denote that in your, in your quote-unquote "sign-in", so that this way I know where to place your comments. That being said, we will move on. Are there any other members of the city who wish to address the council tonight? I know that we have communications from the Charter Review Commission, but I want to make sure that I see that Director Warner's on. So unless everyone's all set there, I can move on and ask Chair Singer to speak. Okay. Next, we have communications from other city employees as needed. And we have gotten our Charter Review Committee off the ground in our virtual environment. And tonight, we have asked, I always want to say Counselor Singer, but no, tonight is Chairperson Singer, a member of our community who stepped up to serve on this committee. So without any further discussion, David Singer, the floor is yours.
Oh, thank you. I'm looking at a screen of letters. So I'm sorry I can't see all of you, but I'll make believe. Thank you for inviting me. So we've started Charter Review Committee 2020. And what that means is that under the charter, Section 8, every year ending in zero, it's imperative that a committee, not a commission, a committee of persons be selected to review the charter and to file a report at the end of the year, making some recommendations if they deem necessary. So I think because of the COVID, we got off to a little bit of a late start. We had a meeting on May 28th of the committee members. I don't know if all of you know who the committee members are, so I'll read them to you. Several were picked by President Stempel, and several were picked by Mayor Wiede Gardner for the charter. So we have Vice President Otis Wheeler from the council. We have Christine Forgji, Counselor Christine Forgji from the council, and Counselor Sheila Gilmore from the council on the committee. And itself, Alan Wood, John Lunt, and Erin Donnelly Drake are the other members. So there's one, two, three, there's seven of us that are going to meet and be the persons that, you know, draft and present to you with the report. So what can I, what can I tell you that's useful at this point in time when you have other important business? It's an important endeavor, and I would recommend two things that the charter member, excuse me, that the council members read the charter, especially the legislative section or any other sections that are of interest to you. I'm sure you've done that before, but since we're in a review period, it might be a good idea just to read it more carefully, just to make sure that it makes sense to you as you read it. And so as a result, as a result of this opportunity, the committee is looking for the councilors or the council, as you want to organize it, President Stempel, to present some things to the committee about what, to present their input on what they would like to see amended in the charter. I'm hoping that you can get that to us by early September. We're gonna use the next several months to review the history of the charter, the amendments that have already been done, how those amendments were done. We're gonna go through the charter so that all seven members of the group are at the, on the, at the same level of understanding. I'd also asked the councilors to read Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 43, Capital B, especially Section 10, which discusses how to amend the charter. And you'd be surprised to see, well, so to how the charter gets amended by law. I'm wondering if both you and the community think that this is a time where there's a committee being created that can, that has full authority and power to amend the charter, and that's not the case. We are just a committee that appropriately is set up to review the changes so that you all can carry on with your business, and we can make the review independent of you and give you a recommendation. That's the only power that we have. Maybe the other power we have is to hold hearings, but we certainly don't have a power, any power to amend the charter. If you read 43B, Section 10, you will learn that the council and the mayor have some ability to amend the charter, but certain provisions of the charter cannot be amended unless they go to the vote of the community. Also, if you, if the council and the mayor cannot agree upon any charter change, there are provisions in the law that would allow the citizens to petition the council to put a charter change on the ballot. And I guess if people are really not happy with the charter, they could, the community can go about asking to create again a charter commission to see if the charter itself needs to be changed. But those are things that, as you give us the recommendations, both you and the departments and the public give us the recommendations, we will express to you what the recommendations have been and try to guide you as to how those provisions of the charter can be amended to give you some guidance. We're gonna meet once a month. Our next meeting is June 23rd, next Tuesday, at 5:30. I guess that's about it. I'm certainly willing to take questions from members of the council.
Are there any questions for David? Counselor Disorga, please.
Ginny, where are you? All right.
I just wanted to know if we had anything that we were concerned about or we just wanted to say or ask to you, where, how do we get in contact with you? I have your email when you were a counselor just a little bit ago.
That's a good question. There is a committee website.
Okay.
You can get that information from the Clerk's Office.
Thank you, and thank you for serving.
Please channel, thank you. Channel everything into Kathy, and she will then channel it to the committee, and then I've been sending all the questions to the committee members. But that's how, we're going to organize everything through the Clerk's office.
Thank you very much for doing this.
You're welcome, thank you. Thank you for what you do.
Counselor Ricketts has a question for you, David.
Great.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Singer. So I'd like to ask, what would happen if you had a number of Charter changes that you felt would need to go on the ballot for the public to be able to vote on? How would we do it if, if it was lengthy? Like, would we try to break it down, or would you rewrite it all and kind of highlight the pieces? I'm just wondering how we would really be able to do it.
Well, that, I'm glad to, that's a good question. I'm trying to learn the answers to how to actually provide that information for you. But by way of example, I can imagine the report that you would be sent would be along the lines of the sections of the Charter. So we might say, you know, Section 2, Section 3. Here are the recommended changes, here's the specific provisions, and these are the changes that have been recommended. Number 2, what does the committee itself think of these changes? If, if that's the kind of discussion we have? And then third, and I want to, I want to tell you that it's, if you read 43B and you read that section, you'll see that the power really is, is within the council and/or the citizens, and the mayor, of course. You, you have to work in, you have to work, you, the, the mayor and the council have to agree on an amendment before it can be submitted to the legislature, at least if you're going to go that route. If you want to go the route of bringing it to the voters, then we could, I, I, I'm hopeful that both myself and the committee could become more learned on it, although I don't wish to give legal advice. And you could ask the town lawyer, who is very, a city lawyer or solicitor, I guess at this point, who understands what's going on, because that, that law firm has been involved in all the other changes and understands the law. But it's coming back to you.
Okay.
Okay, so you're going to have a discussion about our report at some time in the winter, and you're going to decide how you're going to want to proceed.
Okay. Thank you so much.
You're welcome, thank you.
Is that Clerk Scott?
Yes, thank you, President Stempel. On the City of Greenfield's website, there is a Charter Review Committee page that includes an email address that anyone can send an email to the Charter Review Committee that is filtered through the Clerk Council Office, and that will be sent out either by myself or the administrative assistant.
Thank you.
Thank you for your help, Clerk Scott.
Thank you, Chairman Singer.
She is the best. Thank you, Kathy. Any other questions for Chair Singer?
All right, so I expect to see, I expected you to do good work, organize around, organize a committee or a group of yourselves, and send the questions sooner than later, because we'd like to go to public hearings sometime in the fall, and then things are going to get busy, especially with the Clerk's office in terms of the election. And I'd like to get, we'd like to have something to you by the end of the year and, and, you know, be able to fulfill the obligation under the Charter.
Thank you.
All right, have a good summer, everybody.
I muted myself. All right. Thank you, Chair Singer.
I can go.
You are now dismissed. I took that from former President Renault.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Now we are moving to our public comment. I did see that there's someone who signed up for public hearing. Your, I will let you know and invite you to speak once we open the public hearing in just a moment. But first and foremost, we will start with our folks in, who've signed up for public comment. And so I'm scrolling back up to our virtual sign-in book. Counselor Dolan.
I was just wondering if it would be worthwhile to clarify for the folks who are here the difference between public comment and a public hearing? I'm not sure that everyone's familiar with that.
Well, for the public hearing, we have one, two, three, four items, five items on our agenda tonight. Our financial matters, which all financial matters brought before the council are also open to a public hearing, which means members of the public can come to speak specifically to those items on the agenda under Item 9 of our agenda. So if you wish to speak to any of those financial orders tonight, that is, you would be speaking to the public hearing. Public comment is you have three minutes to speak to essentially whatever's on your mind right now, and to address the council in that way. Counselor Dolan, does that satisfy your point of clarification?
Yeah, that's great, thank you.
Of course. All right, perfect, all right. I just wanted to make sure. Thank you for clarifying that. So that being said, everyone here, it looks like, is here to speak to public comment. And I will start at the top of the list. So it's very similar, if you were to be at a council meeting in person, you, you actually don't need to state your name. Kathy, do you want, do we want them to state their name and address, even though it's written in the chat box?
Yes, please, for the recording.
Of course. All right, so I will call your name and invite you for three minutes. The clerk will keep the time. And when I, we have a lot of folks here to speak tonight, so I really want to encourage folks to try to keep to the three minutes, to be fair to, to everyone else, who will also try to keep to the three minutes, so that we have adequate time to hear from everybody tonight. And so when you hear the ding of the clerk's timer, that means that we've hit the three minutes, and I ask that you make your final, final sentence and wrap it up. So now I'd like to welcome Emily Bork, our first speaker tonight for public comment.
Hi, everyone, thanks for having me. My name's Emily Bork. I'm a resident of Greenfield on Franklin Street in Precinct 6. I came here today to really echo the demands that Bree and Mary Ann, some of the organizers of the rally, had earlier, that moving forward will defund our local departments, reallocate funds, and invest in our community. I want to ensure we don't have officers on our force with previous use of force or other various violent charges, and that we have a zero tolerance policy. In fact, Mayor Roxanne recently said at a committee chairs meeting that we are not Minneapolis. And I just want to say that words like this hold so much power. It's similar to the saying, racism has no home here. And I'm here to say racism absolutely has a home here. It teaches basketball after school, it babysits your kids, it gets paid by our town to make statues of fishes and then scream "All Lives Matter" at rallies, and it drives local, yeah, it drives local transport and tried to run down a family for what? Being black in public. Being black in public is not a crime. By saying we are unlike other places in the United States, we're really saying to local racists that they can slip under the radar. We need to have zero tolerance for racism in our community. We can't continue to see nooses hung in our town. It's, something needs to change, obviously, and I'm hoping to garner your support, city council members and Mayor Roxanne. And I apologize for calling you out anyway, but I really, no, you didn't have a negative intention in saying we are not Minneapolis, but all of our words hold power, and we need to identify the fact that we absolutely have a problem here in Greenfield and beyond. Thank you so much for having me. I yield my time.
Thank you, Emily. Next, we have Sarah Lenzalata. I hope I said that right.
Hi. I would like to address the council about defunding the police department in Greenfield. My name is Sarah Lenzalata. I own a bar in Precinct 8 in downtown Greenfield.
I'm sorry, can you, can you please state your name and address?
10 Fisk Avenue, Greenfield.
Thank you so much.
I own a bar in Precinct 8 in downtown Greenfield. Our staff prevents violence and harassment by cultivating an environment of awareness, care, and preparedness for nonviolent intervention. Instead of calling the police, we are able to handle most, all situations arise through speaking calmly with people who call issues, and if necessary, we work collaboratively to escort the person out of the bar and help them find a safe way home. If there was a number to call that offered nonviolent or protective support, and one that would ensure this person's safety, we would use that when needed. In my time as owner of the bar, I've called the cops only once, and it was because there was a drunk, off-duty cop acting violently. He was an extremely scary person. Early on, this already inebriated state police officer harassed our door person about their gender, saying, "What are you?" We monitored his behavior closely after this. Later on in the night, the off-duty state officer, his name is Jason LaRose, pulled a knife out to attack the same employee. Another staff took action and disarmed the officer and quickly escorted him out of the building, removing his knife. When we called the cops on LaRose, we knew that we were calling people who would protect him, make this incident disappear without any accountability. We were right, nobody ever followed up with us or our employee, or asked if we wanted to press charges. We did contact GCC, where Jason is employed as a criminal justice instructor to inform the school of this dangerous transphobic behavior, but it seems that he is still employed there. We live in a country where marginalized people are at risk of being executed by the police with impunity just for living their lives. For the overwhelming majority of interventions that police engage in, there are other professionals who are more equipped and better trained to support the well-being and safety of the community. It's in our power to end the white supremacist legacy of policing. Let's join Los Angeles, Minneapolis, and so many other brave cities and towns to reinvent our approach to community safety. Franklin County is the poorest county in Massachusetts. Every major study on crime in poor communities concludes that policing significantly decreases people's safety and well-being and does nothing to decrease crime. These studies show that significant investments in a community's quality of life, access to housing, healthcare and food, social services, and restorative justice programs increases safety for everyone. Exposing people to the carceral system, even on the smallest level, increases poverty and instability for families, makes life more miserable, and increases violence. Defund the police, abolish the police, invent, invest in prevention, nonviolent intervention and support. I yield my time.
Thank you, Sarah. Next, we have Kat Wagner.
Hi. My name is Kat Wagner. I live at 574 Bernardston Road. I am an educator in Greenfield, and I speak for and inspired by my students who deserve to live, grow, and dwell in an anti-racist society. I am speaking to echo the previous two public thoughts to defund the Greenfield Police Department. I realize that there is already a somewhat finalized 2021 proposed budget, but I seek to urge the council to consider reallocating funds, especially given the gross discrepancies in necessary funding for our education during this unprecedented time. I would like the council to consider ending school resource officers in public schools. I would like the council to consider ending money bail in Franklin County. And I would especially like the council to consider creation of a police review board with power to review complaints, including the use of force, and to determine disciplinary action for any offending officers. I want to echo the previous citizens' voices in saying that communities that thrive do so because of support from their government, not because of policing. We need more structures in place to ensure that, and we need to really reconsider the way that we use the police department. Thank you, I yield my time.
Thank you very much, Kat. Next, we have Ella Condon.
Hello. My name's Ella Condon. I live at 54 Wells Street in Greenfield in Precinct 8. I'm also here to echo the voices of my fellow community members, as well as the national conversation being had about police brutality. Though Greenfield's a small town, it's not exempt from this conversation. As of the 2015 census, our community is 1.7% black, but makes up 9.5% of arrests from, gathered from statistics from May 2017 to May 2020. Some of our officers have been accused of racism, most notably is Officer Daniel McCarthy. Daniel McCarthy has had instances, including hanging the Confederate flag in his garage, a lawsuit against him regarding racial bias filed by the sole officer of color in Greenfield Police Department, as well as an informal complaint regarding comments he made about black victims of police brutality back in October. Many people across the US and in this community will say that police need more funding in order to implement proper training to prevent police brutality and racism. But many of the police departments that have been the worst offenders of police brutality have had some of the most progressive reforms, specifically Minneapolis and Albuquerque. The police as an institution is violent and criminalizes and dehumanizes parts of our community, most notably those who are black, indigenous, Latino, and poor. Even the Franklin County Sheriff, Christopher Dolan, knows just how messed up our criminal justice system is, by noting that most people who enter Franklin County jail aren't bad people, but come from difficult environments, and that they should receive help, not punishment. We really, truly want to help our community. We should invest more in social programs and safety nets that help catch people before they are caught by a violent system that criminalizes them. Our police department should not be given the funding to hire the max amount of officers during this time. They should not be given the funding to buy more hybrid cruisers. I plead, I urge you to reallocate those funds to the school or other social programs. That's it, thank you, I yield my time.
Thank you so much, Ella. Next, we have Marion Bullock.
Hi, my name is Marion. I am a local community member, I live on Hope Street. I'm currently active on the Community Action Board, and for, I worked for the Family Resource Center for a few years, I now work for a national organization that's also located in Greenfield. Speaking tonight in support of reallocating resources from the Greenfield Police Department. I also want to commend, as the mayor did, the organizers of the Black Lives Matter March. Specifically, I want to commend Bree and Tatiana and Autumn and the other people of color who stood on the front line during what I would consider a historic march for Greenfield. And I also want to name that since George Floyd was murdered less than a month ago, police in the United States have killed 120 people since then. You know, on this meeting, I've heard, and I have two children in Greenfield schools, that the schools are facing a really bleak forecast. And I want to name that the issues for our kids and for kids of color are only going to be, get harder and harder without explicit steps to address students' needs. One of the main demands that has been outlined is about the school resource officer, and I do want to request that the city council, whether it's through adopting a motion or whatever you can do to urge the school committee to eliminate the position of the school resource officer to do that. In the past 24 hours, I've connected with dozens of parents of kids of color who've been arrested, experienced racism by staff, or had experiences with the SRO completely dismissed. When I worked with the school resource, with the Family Resource Center, I also worked with a number of those families and children, and their education has been interrupted. Many times, they've moved districts. My own oldest daughter is now in the charter school, and to be 100% honest, like, My own oldest daughter is now in the charter school, and to be 100% honest, like, I have ethical conflicts about my tax money going to a charter school, but the school could not address racism in the ways that I felt it needed to be addressed for my family to be there. In 2015, a conversation was opened about racism. We were told that, parents were told it would be one of many, and there was never a next step from that conversation. So what I'm asking is for a clear implementation of a plan with action steps to confront these issues head-on, and to know that they're not specific incidents, that there's data on disciplinary actions that show a clear disproportionality by race and action. They show that students who identify as Latino or African-American or black receive a higher percentage of out-of-school suspension as compared to other racial groups, and that the ratio, and that the ratio between out-of-school versus in-school suspension is higher for Latino kids and black kids, meaning that they're suspended more often, and more often it's out-of-school instead of in-school. So dismantling the school-to-prison pipeline is the obligation of our educators. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just wanted to, before we move on for more public comment, I don't know, a few folks have spoken to the resource officer, and I am aware that this year, there's no resource officer planned, and the money has been reallocated to the schools. So I just wanted to let you guys know that. I'm not sure if it's been, or how well it's been announced. Rebecca Moki, I know that you revoked your time, but you signed up, so I want to give you another opportunity to speak if you'd like to.
Hi, thank you. I did revoke my time. I'm Rebecca Moki. I live in Montague in Precinct One. I didn't mean to sign up, but I am glad to hear about the school resource officer. That's good news, and I do support everything that everyone shared. Thank you all for coming prepared with this comment. I yield my time.
Thank you. Sorry to put you on the spot, but I just wanted to make sure that if you, if you wanted to speak, you could. There was a school committee discussion that was tabled. However, the police department has not funded that, or asked for the funding for that. So I just wanted to be clear on that. Sorry, my chat box keeps moving, so I have to scroll. Next, we have Rebecca Seifried. Seifried?
Hi, yes, I'm Rebecca Seifried. I'm a current resident of 63 Holly Street in North Hampton, but I will be an incoming Greenfield resident, 79 Maple Street this summer.
Welcome.
Thank you. So as others have articulated on this call, I'm voicing my support for the effort to dramatically reduce the police budget and reallocate these funds to community social services. Time and time again, we've seen how reductions in police budgets have not led to increased crime. In New York City in 1971, and again in 2014, when police voluntarily reduced their working hours through strike action, there was no crime wave, no massive traffic jams, no rioting. We know that reducing the police budget means freeing up resources to invest in services that make the community healthier, safer, better educated, and more civically engaged. If the town of Greenfield is a place where its citizens are truly the first priority, then I believe the budget needs to reflect that. So to that end, I call on the town council members to enact many of the changes that others have been calling for that I'll reiterate. First, the mayor has proposed a 6.3% increase to the police budget for 2021 in the amount of over $217,000. Instead of spending more money on a department that, as the other callers have pointed out, is failing the community, why not follow in the steps of other cities and reduce that budget? Others around the country, including in nearby North Hampton, are calling for reduction of police budget in the amount of 50%. This would free up $1.7 million in funding for Greenfield, if my numbers are correct. Number two, then, you can reallocate that funds to the things that people have been asking for: youth support, committing to truly affordable housing, to funding first responders that are trained in mental health, peer support, substance use, and domestic and intimate partner violence. Number three, create a police review board with real oversight power. I think that would go a long way towards addressing some of the issues people have brought up today. And I also want to highlight that it's critical to end the town's complicity in mass incarceration, specifically by ending money bail in Franklin County and releasing primary caregivers, pregnant and parenting people from jail. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak, and I yield my time.
I don't know what that was, but it ended. And folks, I just want to say that the chat box, I know it feels like it might be like a work Zoom or something like that, but we really have to avoid breaking open meeting law, and so please refrain from using the chat box for comments or praise or what have you. It's just not the format for that here at a city council meeting. So thank you for your understanding. And then next, we have Fran.
Tom.
Fran, what's an awful piece of, like, this thing is so loud.
How's that?
Now, it's a little bit of a call.
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you. We'll, we'll, we'll do that. Sorry to happen.
My apologies. I'm Karen Rayner, 172 Highland Avenue, Greenfield, on the future here in town. I'm also joining this call tonight to ask our city councils to defend the police, and I'm super grateful for everyone who's already spoke in favor of this. Yeah, the horrifying mentions of George Floyd, Breonna Taylor, and many, many other black people by the use are acts of racial terrorism in a nation which has yet to fix up to its history of racial terrorism. And as such, defending the police has become a rallying point for a social movement that's sweeping the country right now and that we should be ignoring. The PD of Greenfield rallied today in support of this movement, as has already been described, and the defense Greenfield PD organizers have together a plan for what reallocating could literally look like in this town. As has been said, we are a community in dire financial need, and the reallocation of resources that currently go toward carceral solutions for people's problems could instead go directly toward real solutions, including ones outlined in this claim: solutions of reallocating funds to mental health first responders and peer support work, and other underfunded social services, like committing to truly affirmative initiatives steered by directly impacted folks, like abolishing cash bail and releasing primary caregivers, parents, and pregnant folks from jail. Abolishing institutions and practices that systematize racism and racial terrorism, reallocating those resources to meet unmet needs in the communities most affected by racist violence, leaving the best tradition of abolitionism, and that tradition has a deep historical set of roots in this town. We have an opportunity to show people what kind of community Greenfield could be by confronting the legacy of racial terrorism here head-on and doing something about it structurally. And I really encourage the council to listen to all of the folks who've spoken already tonight. Thank you. I yield my time.
It was a little, I just wanted, it was a little challenging to hear you, but I think we all did our best to listen well. So thank you. Next, we have Ben Delozer. Was I close?
You got it close enough, Ben Delozer, from 347 Federal Street. Yeah, thank you. Thanks for the opportunity to speak to you all. I wanted to address both the council and Mayor Roxanne, and similarly, in the theme of defunding local police and reallocating those funds. One of the things I've heard named, I think, I think the mayor named it today, just at the gathering that was on the common today. I know it was in an interview, I think, with the chief of police and the recorder, but the idea that the police department is moving away from having to hire from the civil service exam list. My understanding is that there, there's an argument that that'll open up the opportunity to have more freedom in hiring. What I, my understanding is that this is something that police departments have been looking for, for a variety of different reasons that go far beyond social justice, that there's just a whole lot of flexibility, there's a speed of hire piece in that, there's ability for lateral moves, and just a lot more flexibility in choosing candidates that police departments want. So I get a little wary about if that's really actually going to be utilized to really try to diversify and bring people of color into the department, or if that's just something where it's, it's a convenient thing to kind of be able to name. And I'm wanting to just point out also that, as much as I really appreciate the idea of bringing more diversity to any space, certainly having police that were people of color not prevent George Floyd from being murdered either. So I'm not entirely sure. That doesn't seem to really address the issues of the system itself and which those officers would be operating in, no matter how well-intentioned they are, what their backgrounds are. And so my question really is, I hear that as part of the solution. I don't really fully understand exactly how that is going to provide much of a solution to the concerns that have been brought forward by most of the people that have already spoken. They've spoken to it really eloquently as far as where those things could be allocated to. And I guess, when I look at it, my, the last thing I'll just say is, certainly, I was hearing Governor Cuomo in New York yesterday or today talking about addressing New York City directly and saying, "Start from scratch, recreate it from the ground up, start with a blank slate, and recreate exactly what you want." He was talking to the community and the department about that. And my thought is simply, if New York City, that, you know, as large and complex as they are, why can't Greenfield be doing that? So with that, I will just say that I know as a citizen, I would be very happy to lend whatever sort of efforts I can towards that, and I'm sure there are many, many other community members that will. So with that, I will yield my time.
Thank you, Ben. Next, we have Marianna Ritchie.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, I'm Marianna Ritchie, and I live in Precinct Eight. Previous callers have cited copious data and anecdotal evidence demonstrating that our police department is indeed a force of racist violence, and they have eloquently stated clear and specific demands regarding defunding them and redirecting those funds to the direct support of people of color in our town. I'm in wholehearted agreement with these previous callers. I also want to thank Councilor Dolan for making such a clear and unequivocal statement at the rally, not just of vague support, but of intent. Your statement of intent to defund and ultimately abolish the police contrasts with a lot of other statements I'm hearing from community leaders, including the mayor, about being here to listen and about being allies. I want to caution against proclamations of allyship becoming a way of evading the responsibility to actually do something to end white supremacy. What this movement actually requires, I think, is not allies, but accomplices. To be an accomplice means to take action. Accomplices are people in privileged, empowered positions, leveraging that power to actually dismantle the oppressive structures that are killing and brutalizing black, indigenous, and people of color. I really want to emphasize that you are the city councilors. You are the people who currently have the ability to do this work, to redirect resources, to pass legislation. Very clear and actionable demands have been delivered to you by Bree and the other activists who are leading this movement locally. We're asking you to end money bail, defund the police budget, redirect that money toward affordable housing, mental health services, strengthening existing practices of restorative justice, et cetera. You've listened, you've expressed allyship, some of you, and now I really urge you to act and to begin this work. You have the power and the opportunity to make our town a better place for all of us to live in and to participate in this amazing global project of transformation that's underway right now. We have this opportunity to do beautiful work in this community, and I ask that you start doing tangible work today, now. Thank you very much. I yield my time.
Thank you. Next, we have Emily Miller, please.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. So my name is Emily Miller, and I live in Precinct Five on Russell Street. Echo other voices from the community who have spoken to voice my support for our taking substantial steps towards true safety and justice in Greenfield. We have so much work to do. Black Lives Matter is more than a slogan and a sign. This is a movement with leadership and a vision that asks us to actually address the longstanding injustice of racial disparities and police violence. Of course, we need dialogue and education, but that's not enough. What does it mean to say Black Lives Matter? The ask of us as citizens and representatives from national and local leadership, and by that I mean the communities most impacted, could not be clearer. We need to redistribute the inordinate amount of our tax dollars that go to the police budget. We need to stop using the police to address needs that policing actually worsens. A true vision of safety and justice means prioritizing spending on education, affordable housing, public health, childcare, just to name a few. Here are a couple of examples of the many concrete steps that could represent a beginning. I fully support and ask our local representatives to move on immediately. Funding from the state requires cuts to our budget. I'm asking for a commitment to cut the police budget and to protect education, housing, health, services that benefit all of us, especially those most affected by racism and policing, and a commitment to keep the police out of public education. I understand that there are no SROs planned for the following year, but I think a commitment to no future contracts for school resource officers in our schools would be a good move and responding to the asks of the leaders that we're commending. Thanks for listening and for taking concrete steps to show that the many statements made since the murder of George Floyd reflect an actual commitment to beginning to undo a long legacy of racism reflected by governments that continually prioritize guns over care and true safety. Thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you, Emily. Next, we have Vanessa Brewster, please. Vanessa, you might be muted. Let me see if she's still on. No, I don't see Vanessa on. I will come back to her in case she comes back on later. Andrew Ritchie, please.
This is Andrew Ritchie, and I live in Precinct Eight. And I have so appreciated all of the statements that have been made, the brave words that we've heard from the organizers of these recent actions, and to tonight at this meeting as well. And so I don't want to take up a lot of time, but I am, I am also reiterating this claim to defund the Greenfield Police Department. And I want to speak specifically to the suggestion that we've heard a few times recently from our, our political leadership, that Greenfield doesn't really have a problem in this area. And we've heard a couple of statements tonight that suggest the opposite, and I want to add to that and call the council's attention to the ACLU's April 2020 Study of Racially Discriminatory Drug Enforcement, which is called "A Tale of Two Countries: Racially Targeted Arrests in the Era of Marijuana Reform." And this was a study to see if the decriminalization and legalization of marijuana had affected racial bias in drug policing, and it had, but not in the, the direction that one might hope. Policing has become more racist in this area, in states that have legalized, like Massachusetts. And in fact, the most important point for you to glean from this is that in this entire study of all the counties in the country, Franklin County ranked number one in racially biased drug enforcement. Blacks in this county are 117 times more likely than whites to be busted for marijuana possession in a county where it's legal, despite virtually identical consumption rates across races. Not only that, but Franklin County also had the largest increase in racial bias from 2010. In 2010, blacks were seven times more likely. Now, there- Now they're 117 times more likely. And this has happened under the leadership of a self-described progressive police chief who supports community policing, who I'm sure identifies as anti-racist. And it sounds like he's also a really nice guy. But this proves the point that what we need to do is defund police departments because even nice cops get it wrong. Even friendly cops end up articulating this this or expressing this racist imperative of police departments. And so I would just encourage all of you to to look at that study and take it seriously because it's shameful and I'm ashamed to live in a county that ranks number one in this area. Thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you, Andrew. Brian Melonson, please. I don't see Brian on the call still. Let me check to see if Vanessa's here. Nope. Next, Brianna Arsenault, please.
Hi, my name is Brianna Arsenault. I'm in the Seventh Precinct on Rider Way. I'm one of the organizers from the Black Lives Matter protest and then the rally that we hosted today. And I would like to commend all of the callers who showed up today to show their support for the demands that we have listed off, and I will reiterate them now. We want to end school resource officers in public schools and we want a commitment and to explicitly hear from the schools that they will not have and will not put back resource police officers. We want to end money bail in Franklin County. We would like to defund the police department and reallocate the funds specifically to schools, mental health first responders, peer supports, substance use response, domestic and intimate partner violence advocacy and support. We would like the creation of a police review board with power. We want a commitment to true affordable housing. And we would like to to release primary caregivers who are pregnant and or parenting people from jail. And we me and the people who have been working on these demands will be sending to the council members a more detailed and in-depth list of these demands. I would also like to take the time to read a statement from one of the parents from the Greenfield Public School District. So, "No parent of a child should be called by the police station to come get their child who was taken from school, shackled and handcuffed and left that way for over five hours. GPD escalated an event to violence. At the time they were called, the inciting incident was over and the children were waiting to speak about what had occurred as bystanders to the event, nothing more. The GPD created conflict when they placed a child who did not want to be taken away in a chokehold. This violence led to fearful reactions from a family member and the cops had no tools to deal with it other than force, cuffs, and detainment. There was no criminal behavior on the part of the children. No charges were ever brought against anyone. All it accomplished was a traumatic event for seven Brown and Black kids and their families. Deep mistrust of the school stays ten and realization that our kids are not safe in the school as long as schools are present. There were so many ways to avoid this." Again, we are looking for an explicit no from the school and a commitment to remove the school resource officers and to not put them back. I would also just like to state that I wasn't aware of the mayor's in suggestion for increasing the police school budget. So it is a bit insulting to march down the street with us and to show up at the rally in support. It's conflicting, so we have conversations, but we're not here for talking circles. We're here for commitments and to take action and actually do the work. And we can't continue to be told later another time eventually, or I don't know, is unacceptable when the councilors and the mayor are here to serve the community and the members of that community. And it's not it's not instilling much faith or putting much confidence in myself or my organizers or people a part of the Black Lives Matter movement. I yield my time.
Thank you. Next we have Greta Spalberg Lee.
Hello. Hi, I'm Greta Spalberg Lee and I live on Crescent Street. I don't know what precinct precinct that is, but I would like to echo the just I I don't want to hear platitudes about how great the town is or what our values are. I I want to see results. I would like a clear commitment for no more resource officers or any armed people in schools with children and also defunding the police, like a a significant reduction in the budget. I I think that if you're not if you're not in agreement with the rhetoric behind that, that's a problem. But I I just think that needs to happen. I don't want to hear I don't want to hear what a what a great idea it is. I want to hear what is being done to do that. I want to hear a timeline. I don't want to hear that you're waiting for to hear about from state officials or this or that. I want to hear what you can do at the town level, at the city level, and what is being done. And so I would I'd just like to, yeah, just to echo those two points. Oh, and the third point is the end of cash bail, which is a barbaric practice. It just sounds like something out of Charles Dickens, completely criminalizes the poor. And it's it's just something that is makes me deeply uncomfortable that in my silence, I would at all support that. So I just want to state those three things. Police out of schools, a huge reduction in police budget, and and the end of cash bail. Those are the three things. Thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you, Greta. Let's see, who do we have? Teo Drake, please.
Hi, I'm I'm Teo Drake and I live at 95 Country Club Road in Precinct Two. And I want to reiterate what others have said. I don't need to add to the exact points, but I want to reiterate about the defending of the Greenfield Police Department and particularly reallocating those resources using what's the ability within the town to to reallocate money within agencies. But the other thing I think is really important is I think the mayor is right. We're not Minneapolis. Minneapolis is light years ahead in terms of enacting every police reform that under the sun, and none of that has worked. So I think there's nothing magical about the white folks here versus the white folks in Minneapolis. Like, we're the same. We have the same issues of police violence targeting communities of color, particularly Black and Indigenous communities. We are there's nothing inherently about us as a community that is different than Minneapolis, with the exception that they have years and years of police reform under their belt, and it hasn't worked. And so they're moving as a city council to defund the police department, and I think we can learn from that. We don't have to go through all of those other steps that we know don't work. The research is there, right? And so I think it's really important to to one, be mindful about sort of how we frame this discussion and about sort of how we approach it. The the last thing I want to say is particularly as a white person, I want to be really mindful about, I've heard a couple of things that have been uncomfortable to hear. And it's this conversation about kindness and how we frame this discussion going forward. Because we're going to have, we're going to need to have these conversations over and over and over again. And they are going to be hard conversations. And when I start to hear things like, we should listen more and there should be kindness. I want to be really clear about who needs to listen more and who needs to be given the space to talk more, right? And I often hear kindness used as a weapon, particularly against marginalized communities. And there's a really big difference between what is kind and what is nice, right? And nice is a veneer, and it isn't what we want to do, right? Kind can be really hard. It can be loud. It can be it can be experiences aggressive because kind ultimately is what allows folks to like live whole, right? And it's so really be mindful about how we frame those conversations and about how we sort of are policing people's tone and about sort of setting parameters around that conversation that I think are unhelpful. So with that, I'll yield my time. Thanks.
Thank you, Teo. Next we have, so we have three more folks on our list. We have next we have Ursa Sherr.
Hello, council. My name is Ursa Sherr. I live at 63 Madison Circle in Precinct Six. And I'd like to similarly voice my support in previous comments, including the deep desire and sort of moral conviction to end cash bail. This is it's just penalizing the poor in a way that serves no place in a community where we have to make space and appreciate all income levels. I grew up poor and in a poor town and could easily see the the repercussions that come out of that. And so that feels like an immediate step that can be taken swiftly. I would also like to speak about the removal of the SRO from Greenfield Public Schools. This feels necessary and increasingly urgent, both in terms of national trend and as I watch my Black son approach the age of entering Greenfield Public Schools, I am filled with dread at the idea of sending him into a school with an armed officer. It it's entirely contrary to what I believe we can make possible for the way we we care collectively for our children. And finally, I similarly voice my support for reinvesting the funds that Greenfield has at its disposal in terms of a defunding the police department and adding those resources to incredibly necessary areas, including our public schools. Thank you, and I yield my time.
Thank you. Next we have Sophia Pastore.
Hi, my name is Sophia Pastore. I live on Street Precinct Six. I am a social worker in town. One who's about to enter the public school this year, I echo what has been said before me. And the piece I would like to add is that we have so normalized defunding our school system. And it is such a different idea for people to even think about what it would mean to defund the police. And I think for anyone who's listening, who's having a hard time with that idea, lacking in community safety professionally with people who are criminalized because of poverty, because of drug use. And the amount of trauma that people have is indescribable. And that that affects someone's brain function, their ability to move through the world is huge. And I think as a community, we can offer each other so much safety by deescalating the situation that is happening. For example, Ursa just spoke. I don't want it normalized for my child or any child, this armed person in their school, regardless of the training that person has had, regardless of what supervision that person has had. I believe that is outside of the scope of any police department anywhere. And there are so many people doing hard and important work in this community who can do that job more effectively and who it's in their scope of practice for. So with that, I yield my time. Thank you.
Thank you. And last we have Erica Wallencheck.
Hi, thank you for your time. My name is Erica Wallencheck. I'm from Precinct Five. And I'm speaking as an ally and to echo those voices that have spoken before me. I'm particularly in support of the demands made and to all the organizers that have been working tirelessly to create action in our community. I think I've spent a lot of this movement listening, and I think for myself as an ally, that is important. But I'm hoping to contribute my voice as one of many in support of what needs to be done in our community to affect change. And I'm so grateful for those making the space and affecting that action. Thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you, Erica. And last, I am going to close public comment here in just a moment, so kind of last call. Emma Sidowski, please.
Hi, everyone here. Can you hear me?
I can hear you, Emma.
Amazing. I just want to echo all the voices that have already spoken. I'm going to say this without getting too emotional because that is where I'm at in the world. And I know it's not about me as a white person. I've just sat in at all the Northampton meetings the last couple of days. And being someone who has been from Northampton to move to Greenfield, it's just been so inspiring to hear everyone unified over in that town and to echo echo what they have been saying in Northampton of how important and how crucial it is for our constituents to hear what their people are saying. And we are all here. The job is to enact these positions. We want to be progressive in the way that we want to echo other towns around us. Now is the time. That's about it. I'd like to see some change. I want to hold all of my friends around here in this environment. I want to make sure that people are unified. I want to make sure that we take the steps that we all need to do right here, right now, in this moment and not make it about, I don't know, any ego or any crap like that. So thank you all for being here. Thank you for tuning in. Thank you for listening. I yield my time.
Thank you, Emma. Anyone else signed up to speak? I want to thank everyone for coming up to speak. Virtual meetings are awkward. And again, I just want to remind people, please don't use the chat box to comment. We just have to make sure that we're following open meeting law. Thank you. So yeah, I just want to wrap this up by thanking you all to come out and speak. Virtual meetings can be awkward, so I appreciate seeing so many of you here with us tonight. Time, it is 9:07 PM and I'm going to go ahead and open our public hearing. And at this moment, I ask Vice President Wheeler to please read our public hearings and pecking readings on page 12, please.
Thank you, President Stumpel. While I find the page, I just want to thank everyone who spoke. It was very powerful and moving. Public hearing in accordance with Home Rule Charter, the Greenfield City Council will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, June 17, 2020, at 7:00 PM at Absalom Community Center or via WebEx to receive public input on the following. Appropriate $95,000 from 9/11 contributory retirement to offset deficit in 151 legal in FY20 operating budget. Appropriate $76,000 from 9/11 contributory retirement to offset deficit in 9/14 health insurance in FY20 operating budget. Appropriate $12,000 from 1627 bond premium to offset deficit in bonded debt paydowns in FY20 operating budget. Appropriate $82,000, $82,086 from 1627 bond premium for GSET to run fiber. Appropriate $60,000 from DPW accounts to 01004700 trash disposal account for shortfall. City Council may consider the same on Wednesday, June 17, 2020, at 7:00 PM via WebEx. Materials can be obtained from the City Clerk's Office, 14 Court Square, from 8:30 AM to 5:00 PM Monday through Friday, or by phone, 413-772-1555, extension 6163. Ashley Stumpel, Greenfield City Council President. City Council's second reading, June 17, 2020. Appropriate $95,000 from 9/11 contributory retirement to offset deficit in 151 legal in FY20 operating budget. Appropriate $76,000 from 9/11 contributory retirement to offset deficit in 9/14 health insurance in FY20 operating budget. Appropriate $12,000 from 1627 bond premium to offset deficit in bonded debt paydowns in FY20 operating budget. Appropriate $82,086 from 1627 bond premium for GSET to run fiber. Appropriate $60,000 from DPW accounts to 01004700 trash disposal. Appropriate $60,000 from DPW accounts to 01004700 trash disposal account for shortfall. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will leave the public hearing open at the chance that someone might want to speak to his comments for now. And that was on page six, please. For some reason, I was looking at the main agenda. So next, we'll move forward with motion, orders, and revolutions, please. May I please have, I believe, Counselor Gilmore, we're taking this, or Counselor, I forget who he appointed for these?
Counselor Gwynn, probably.
No, Counselor Gilmore.
Right, sorry.
And he appointed somebody on his behalf, and I am...
That would be me.
Counselor Forgji, yes, that was you. So I'm glad you...
Okay, well, if you give me a minute, I'll just get back to the page and I'll read it.
64, thank you so much.
This is on 64. You want the whole thing read?
Yes.
Okay, all right. This is order number fiscal year, fiscal year 20173. City Council Order, City of Greenfield, Massachusetts. The City Council moved that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council amend the Code of the City of Greenfield as written in the strike through attached heretofore as Exhibit A. Chapter 385, Street Sidewalks in Public Places. Article 14, Sidewalk Outdoor Seating. Chapter 385-37, License Required. Term. Chapter 35, 385, sorry, -38, Submittel Requirements. Chapter 385-39, Use Restrictions. Chapter 385-40, Liability Insurance Requirements. And further amends the index of the code and further that non-substantive changes to numbering of the ordinance be permitted in order that it may be in compliance with the numbering format of the Code of the City of Greenfield.
Second, Wheeler.
Thank you. Motion's been read and seconded. Report from committee, please.
I am happy to report that the Appointments and Ordinances Committee met, and this motion received a unanimous positive recommendation to the council.
Thank you. Any discussion? From counselors? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and take a roll call vote, please. Clerk Scott.
Counselors Stempel, may I...
Yes.
Oh, I think Counselor Wheeler has it. Thank you.
I just wanted to note that it looked like there were recommendations to make amendments to the, to the language in front of us, and so I guess I would ask if an A&amp;O committee member would like to make those amendments?
Those amendments, I will give you a little bit of background on it. The amendments were made at the meeting. They were voted on, and they were also all positively recommended. The, the mayor was at our meeting as well and explained to us that these were more or less done to clean up language. And also, as we went through, we decided that there were a few other things, the committee decided there was a few other things as well that needed language to be cleared up. Do I, do I need to read the motions?
If these were all voted unanimously, let's make those motions, and then we can discuss.
Okay.
Counselor Gilmore, is your question, do you mind if we take your question after the amendments, or do you need to ask your question now?
I wanted to know what the amendment was.
It's on page 64, at the bottom of your page.
Right, correct.
Of your agenda.
So I will read, shall I read that now?
Yes, please.
Okay, majority vote required, vote. Explanation of supporting rationale, excerpt of minutes from A&amp;O, June 10th, meeting on proposed amendments.
Counselor, you can just make the motion to make the amendments.
I'm sorry, you, on a motion from Counselor, this is not what you want me to do. Sorry.
You can just go ahead and make the motion for the amendments on the floor, and then we will discuss the, the motion as amended. So you could say, I move to strike, to scale from, does that make sense?
Got it. I got it. So I move to strike, parentheses, to scale from chapter 384-386.
And you can go ahead and make all three motions at this same time.
Okay, thank you. Voted to strike to the building's exterior wall from chapter 385-39. Motion to strike, to strike the word and, and add fire hydrants and other municipal structures after garbage barrels, comma, to chapter 385-39K add-on.
Second, Wheeler.
Thank you.
Great, thank you both. I have a question again from Counselor Gilmore.
Thank you for being patient with me. No worries. So I want to know if someone from A&amp;O, possibly Counselor Forgji, if you could sort of summarize the conversation around these amendments, just so I understand why the subcommittee came to this decision?
I can, and there are other members of the council that are present as well. If they feel like they want to join in the discussion, I would encourage them to do that. Most of these are to update the original motions that were proposed after a letter went out to the Licensing Commission, from the Licensing Commission to the mayor, granting the mayor authority to go ahead and move on some of these language changes. Is there anybody else that wants to add to this? Anybody else from A&amp;O?
Oh, I'm...
Counselor Ricketts.
Thank you, President Stempel. Yes, basically what we're doing, Counselor Gilmore, is we're just trying to change the language so it'll be more helpful for the businesses to be able to open. And so we just wanted to fix any language that we felt like would be a hindrance or just wouldn't, wouldn't make sense into what we were trying to do by trying to get some outdoor seating set up.
Thank you, Counselor Ricketts. Did that answer your question, I mean, Counselor Gilmore?
Yes, that's really helpful. One thing that I'm concerned about is because we received an email, I don't know how many people were on this, it was, it was a couple of weeks ago, about accessibility and whether or not sidewalks would be blocked and whether or not wheelchairs would be able to pass through. Is that something that A&amp;O took up?
It is, this is Counselor Forgji. It is something that we did check out. We were assured by the mayor that all due diligence had been done and that everybody would, everything would be in place for helping businesses to reopen in accordance with our, you know, codes, bylaws, public health and safety, all of the, all of the issues that would go into making this happen. And there's been a lot of people that have been involved in this, according to Mayor Wieder Gardner as well, and it has been vetted and run through.
Counselor Ricketts.
Yes, I do want to add that we should remember that people currently do have some tables outside of their businesses, and they have aprons. So we've had to always recognize for disability issues, so this would be no different. But I do see that Ms. Letourneau is wanting to speak, and she'll know more about this.
Yeah, so I'd like to acknowledge Director Letourneau.
Muted.
Okay, unmuted, sorry about that. Yeah, so in the changes, before we, the mayor submitted the language to the council, we did double check the ADA standards for sidewalks. And then, as Counselor Mayo did point out, some of the proposed changes were, the proposed changes were also, at least for the outdoor seating portion on city property, which is sidewalks and other places, was run through disability access. So that's part of the plan. So some of the other languages, some of it was antiquated and would make it harder for people to set up tables if they didn't have a place to wrap their, or bring their materials inside, so that's some of those amendments. But yeah, disability access and accessibility was definitely on the top of our mind. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Does that answer your, this question for you, Counselor Gilmore?
Yes, thank you, President Stempel. I appreciate it.
Of course. Any other questions on this amendment to the motion? Seeing none, so we're voting on the amendment to the motion made by Counselor Forgji. We will take a roll call vote.
Counselor Jarvis?
Yes.
Counselor Disorder?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Counselor Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo? Counselor Mayo? Counselor Mayo, I just took you off mute.
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Hirschfeld?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Forgji?
Yes.
Counselor Ricketts?
Yes.
Does the president wish to vote?
Sure, yes.
The amendment passes.
Great, so now we have an amended motion. Any discussion on this any further? I'm seeing heads shaking no, so we'll go ahead and vote on the full motion as amended.
Counselor Jarvis?
Yes.
Counselor Disorder?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Counselor Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Hirschfeld?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Forgji?
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Ricketts?
Yes.
Does the president wish to vote?
Sure, yes.
It passes unanimously.
Thank you. Counselor Forgji, will you please read the next motion?
Yep, hang on. Okay. Order number fiscal year 20-174. City Council Order, City of Greenfield, Massachusetts. The City Council moved that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council amend the Code of the City of Greenfield as written in the strike through attached heretofore as Exhibit A, colon, Chapter 209, Alcoholic Beverages. Article 1, Public Consumption, Section 1, Town Controlled Property, and further amends the index of the code and further that non-substantive changes to the numbering of the ordinance be permitted in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format of the Code of the City of Greenfield.
Thank you.
This also received a...
Hold on, we need a second first.
Second, sorry. Yep.
Thank you. Motion made and seconded. Report from committee, please, Counselor Forgji.
This also received a positive unanimous vote.
And could you also provide, I guess, some of the background of the conversation at all? I don't know if folks have any other questions about this or not.
A lot of this was basically cleaning language, for instance, replacing town with city. And there also was a, an understanding that the licenses for people that serve within house can now during this time when we're trying to help business, dining and restaurant businesses open up, that this would, license would cover that particular piece of having the sidewalk seating be covered by not a separate alcohol license, but the same license that they use for indoor beverage service. And I think that if you go down to the paperwork that's attached, it'll show you, it's highlighted in red, what the actual changes are.
Great, thank you very much for that overview. We have a question from Counselor Gilmore, and if we need clarification, I'll, I'll cue you in, Director Letourneau.
Actually, I think it might be helpful for Director Letourneau to comment first, because she might answer my question.
Well, how about you ask your question first, and then maybe she'll have that answer as well?
Okay, perfect. So I know that when we were talking about this earlier, and I'm losing my timeframe here because of the shut-in, at some point, we were talking about some of these changes becoming permanent and some of them being temporary, and I wonder if this is one that we would consider making permanent, or if this was for a defined timeframe? And if so, I understand nobody knows the end date, but I don't see anything written in there. So would we just like change it back later, or is this something we want to make permanent, possibly?
And for that, I will welcome Director Letourneau back to the floor.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep.
Great, so good question, great question. These ordinance changes do not make Greenfield, New Orleans. So what happens is we actually have some redundant language. The ordinances, as they stood with the prohibition of selling alcohol or serving alcohol on city-owned property, actually made it so that some restaurants could not take advantage of what is actually a temporary order by the governor to allow folks' liquor licenses to extend outside their premises, if their premises abut a city property. So I learned a lot about liquor licenses in the last month. There's a few different types of licenses. Some people are licensed to serve alcohol inside, and then they also can serve on their grounds and premises if they own the premises. Some people can serve it inside, but they can't serve outside even if they own the premises. And then there's some that have an indoor-only license, and they actually like sit on Main Street or some other city street. Right now, for example, restaurants like Thai Blue Ginger or, I'm trying to think of other examples, Main Street Grill, Taylor's Tavern, they're right on the street. And so even if they had outdoor seats, they're actually not allowed to serve alcohol out there by our ordinance. They're also not allowed to sell alcohol outside because of their type of license. So the ABCC and the governor has allowed that second part to be extended through November 1st of this year. So once that goes back to normal, our ordinance will not have to... So once that goes back to normal, our ordinance will not have to be changed back because there's still a process in place by which they need approval to be able to do that from the town and the ABCC. It'll go back to that previous process. Does that make sense? So what we're doing is our wording in our licensure, in our ordinances on this licensure process made it so that these, these restaurants and businesses couldn't exercise the right to take advantage of this temporary situation. But the ABCC rules are very strict. So once we go back to November 1st, to the old ways, if everything's normal, which we're not sure if it will be, that license process will stand. But what it does, we basically were doubled, we were double law, double lying the serving of alcohol. This does not mean that it is now free for all, open container in Greenfield, not what it means. They still have to go through that duly licensed process through the licensing commission. And in normal time, after November 1st or prior to just a week and a half ago, they actually have to do what takes often five to seven weeks to get permission to serve alcohol on, on outdoor of their, where their license extends. It requires contacting the butters, having public hearings and all that. And that stuff will come back. So we're covered and we're protected by that. But it does seem like the additional language in this ordinance was, was sort of double covering up. I said double a lot, I hope I answered the question.
Does that answer your question, Sheila? I mean, Counselor-
Yeah, except now I want to know why it can't be New Orleans.
I know, I was like, why not, Noah?
Maybe next month, just kidding.
Are there any other questions from counselors on this motion? Seeing none, we will take a vote, please.
Counselor Jarvis?
Yes.
Counselor Disorder?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Counselor Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Hirschfeld?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Forgé?
Yes.
Counselor Ricketts?
Yes.
Counts, does the president wish to vote?
Sure, and yes.
It passes unanimously.
Great, thank you very much. So at this moment, I am going to go ahead and close our public comment at 9:33, I mean, our public hearing at 9:33 PM. And I will ask that Vice President Wheeler reads, please, from page 76. Oh wait, I skipped one. Did I skip one? No. Sorry, I'm blurred, I'm tired.
I think we're good. Thank you, President Snipple. I moved that be ordered that the sum of $95,000 be transferred from 911 contributory retirement to offset a deficit in 151 legal FY20 operating budget.
Second. I heard a second from Counselor Letourneau, thank you. Report from committee.
This had a unanimous positive recommendation with one recusal for conflict of interest reasons. And this is the first of four somewhat similar transfers in order to cover deficits. And like I said, unanimous positive.
Great, thank you. A comment from Counselor Jarvis?
Sorry, it took me a minute to get to the mute button. I'm gonna have to excuse myself for the next, for this order and the next order for conflict of interest because I am a retired member and would benefit from this. So I, I will be stepping away.
Thank you so much. Any other discussion or questions about this motion? Seeing none, we'll take a roll call vote, please.
Counselor Disorder?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Counselor Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo? Counselor Mayo?
No.
Counselor Hirschfeld?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Forgé was also a refusal. Correct. Counselor Ricketts?
Yes.
Does the president wish to vote?
Uh, no, that's okay.
Eight yes, the motion passes.
Great. Vice President Wheeler?
Yes, I move that the sum of $76,000 be transferred from 911 contributory retirement to offset a deficit in 914 health insurance in the FY20 operating budget.
Second.
Sorry.
Motion's been made and seconded. Report from committee, please.
Another unanimous positive with four positive votes and one recusal from Counselor Forgé. Just the last one, this is a transfer to cover some deficit for new enrollments and changes in the plan, unanimous positive.
Thank you. A question from Counselor Gilmore?
Yes, this is for Counselor Wheeler. So are these, are these funds gonna have to be made up later, I'm assuming? And this is just to cover a shortfall and we just have to do this now? Or is there an overage in another budget?
Thank you. My understanding is this is an overage in contributory retirement related to GSET and the amount that the state kind of encouraged us to budget because they continue to be very conservative around the growth and subscribership for GSET. So we were fortunate, I think, to have that, that overage and to be able to apply it potentially to the health insurance deficit.
A follow up from Counselor Gilmore?
Yes, thank you. I thought that I had read that. Is this something that is going to be right sized in the future or is this something where you have to do every year? You know?
I'm gonna throw that question to Director Gilman.
I want to make sure I understand the question correctly. Was it, you have to do it every year because of GSET? Or just in general?
I'm wondering if the state is going to make us overestimate the contribution? Or if this is something that happened because GSET is very, very new in Greenfield? And if you don't know the answer, that's okay, that's not gonna change my vote. I'm just curious about what I can expect, Snipple.
What you'll expect is the schedule that the CARREX, the State Retirement Board, has put forward in terms of an assessment amount for, for Greenfield.
Thank you. Counselor Dolan?
Can I just ask, anyone who's not speaking, please mute your mic? Because there's a lot of echo going on, it's making it very hard to understand the conversation.
Thank you. Any other questions on this motion? We will take a roll call vote, please.
Counselor Disorder?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Counselor Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
No.
Counselor Hirschfeld?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Ricketts?
Yes.
Does the president wish to vote?
I, yes.
The motion passes, none, yes.
Uh, Vice President Wheeler, please, page 78.
Thank you. I move that the sum of $12,000 be transferred from 1627 bond premium to offset a deficit in bonded debt paydown in FY20 operating budget.
Second.
Motion's been made, seconded. Report from committee, please.
This had a simple unanimous positive recommendation.
Thank you, any questions? We will take, we will vote.
Counselor Jarvis?
Yes.
Counselor Disorder?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Counselor Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Hirschfeld?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Forgé?
Yes.
Counselor Ricketts?
Yes.
Does the president wish to vote?
Sure, yes.
Twelve yes, the motion passes.
Great, thank you. Vice President, excuse me, Vice President Wheeler, please, page 79.
Thank you. I move that the sum of $82,086 be transferred from 1627 bond premium for GSET to run fiber.
Second, Disorder.
Motion's been moved and seconded. Report from committee.
This had a unanimous positive recommendation. Bond premium can only be used for a limited number of things. And this is a valid use and one that I know GSET will take advantage of soon because Director Lunt has already asked me when it could be available, should we vote in favor.
Did he happen to mention where, where their plan is?
When I, the last I spoke to him, which granted was when he was on vacation and quarantine in Maine-
Missing everybody.
In, in May. He said at that time, the plan was to go down Deerfield Street and I believe up Bernerdston Road. So two main arteries on fire and to branch off from there. But that's the last that I knew.
I think we're back. I'm back. Back anyway?
Yes, you are.
Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Sorry, my meeting froze. I had asked the question if Director Letourneau, Mayor Lunt had mentioned where his plans are to run this fiber.
Yes, to, to repeat, the last I spoke with him, it was, the plan was to go up Bernerdston Road and down Deerfield Street and off corresponding side streets. I know for Deerfield Street, it would be up Meridian and around to circle back eventually towards Dunkin' Donuts. I, so that's the last I knew.
Counselor Gilmore?
Thanks, I know you've taken a lot of questions for me. It's been a long time since we've heard from the director of GSET and I think we would be nice if we could get an update from him soon. Again, it's not gonna change my vote on this motion, but I really would like to know the status of this because I do have some discussions, not conversations, but you're up town asking about when they're gonna get serviced.
Yeah, thank you. He was actually invited to shoot at our meeting when COVID erupted. And I think we canceled the March shooters and the February meeting, I can't remember. But so Director Lunt wanted to be able to speak at that council meeting. Now that the budget has completed, we can definitely extend that invitation to him again.
That would be perfect, thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we will take a vote.
Counselor Jarvis?
Yes.
Counselor Disorder?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Counselor Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Hirschfeld?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Forgé?
Yes.
Counselor Ricketts?
Yes.
Does the president wish to vote?
Ah, sure, yes.
Twelve yes, the motion passed.
Perfect, thank you. Vice President Wheeler, page 78, please.
I move that the sum of $60,000 be transferred from the following accounts listed below to 01004700 trash disposal account, the fund for the shortfall. DPW Admin, $40,000. DPW Highway, $10,000. DPW Parks, $10,000.
Second, Disorder.
Motion's been made, seconded. Report from committee.
This received a unanimous positive recommendation. This was a result of the increase in trash disposal fees, which I think we've talked a lot about, but we're fortunate to be able to cover the shortfall.
Thank you. Any questions or comments related to this motion? Seeing none, we will take a vote, please.
Counselor Jarvis?
Yes.
Counselor Disorder?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Counselor Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo? Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Your microphone is on mute? I'm sorry, Counselor Mayo, was that a yes? I'm sorry to interrupt President Snipple, but I couldn't hear a vote from Counselor Mayo. Did anyone hear the vote?
No, I haven't.
Okay. Doug, I took your microphone off mute.
Yes.
Could you vote, please, one more time? Thank you very much. Counselor Hirschfeld?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Forgé?
Yes.
Counselor Ricketts?
Yes.
Does the president wish to vote?
Sure, yes.
The motion passes unanimously, 12 yes.
Thank you. Moving on to item 11, presentation of positions with similar papers. None, would any, excuse me, would any committee chair like to report? Seeing none. Unfinished business. Counselor Jarvis?
Yeah, we're getting a really bad echo. Somebody run into computers, because sometimes that'll do it if you have student speakers running, because it's really hard, hard to understand. if you have student speakers running because it's really hard to understand.
Sounds like you, your request fixed it. Where was I? Unfinished business? Old business? New business? Counselor Wheeler? Any Vice President Wheeler? Please.
To President Stempel, I just wanted to take this time for whoever is still on the line from the public to recognize all of the public comment that we heard tonight. And to say that, from my perspective, we're limited as a council in our actions tonight by rules of procedure. But I heard your voices loud and clear. I intend to call District Attorney David Sullivan tomorrow to hear his thoughts on ending cash bail and/or any possible attempts, ways that he could act that might mitigate the effects of the cash bail system. I intend to bring the topic of a strengthened citizen review board for the police to the Charter Commission in the form of strengthening the Public Safety Commission in a language and finding a way to increase representation of that body. And furthermore, I intend to continue the ongoing conversations around how to increase affordable housing, whether it is through a housing trust or through adopting the Community Preservation Act in the fall. And I will try to speak with the schools about the SRO and the request to end CRE, the policy of giving out CRAs for absences. I just want to state that so that you know, we hear you. And I appreciate everything that was said tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. And I see some comments. I just wanted to clarify, we did have a lot of comments about the school resource officer. And I wanted to clarify that the school resource officer position FY21 is unfunded on both the police and school budget lines. It was voted by the school committee on June 10th, so I just wanted to put that out there. And obviously, we would want to learn the plan moving forward to, again, make that commitment solid. I see Counselor Ricketts, please.
Yes, thank you, President Stempel. My cat is trying to knock my Chromebook over, sorry. So I just want to thank everyone who came and shared their experiences, their stories, and their future hopes. I am most intrigued about the, I'm just reading notes because I was typing in my phone as fast as I was trying to listen. And so I know that the SRO is state mandated, so I too want to look into that to see. I know that it was pulled, and I know there's a concern, will it ever go back? And I just want to make sure what we can do about that because it isn't like it's something that we wanted and it's our personal, get out of here, our personal choice. So the police review board is something that very much appealed to me. I do think it's important. And I don't know if everybody on this call knows that we have a Public Safety Commission. So I feel like my first duty in the morning is to take all the concerns that I've heard and forward them to the Public Safety Commission and start paying attention and start attending those meetings. And I'm not saying you have to, but to be able to represent you correctly, I need to do that. And so I am not prepared to say, yes, I want to defund our police tonight. What I want to do is I want to look into these ideas so we can put them into practice and we can do something about what you said. Just taking away a bit of money and it might take one officer away, but then it doesn't clean up the problem, in my estimation. So I thank you for the task that I feel is before me right now to really learn more. And I will have to say I need to reach out to the mayor because I do know all the folks who sit on our Public Safety Commission. They are friends, they're colleagues. However, it's an all-white male board. And so I think it's an important step we need to take to change the look of that and get some more input coming in. So again, I want to thank you so much. And I'm trying not to be emotional with everything that's gone on in the last couple of weeks. But yes, this is important. But I want to do it the right way. So I want to sit down and find a way to put this into practice. I just don't want to be in some headline saying, guess what, we also defunded. That doesn't help anything right now. Let's go all the way with all your suggestions and do that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Gilmore, please.
Yes, I have two things. So very, very briefly, I would like to say to Counselor Wheeler, because I'm also on the Charter Commission. I've had some folks reach out to me because I had posted on Facebook that, you know, that I was gonna be working on this. It was before the murder of George Floyd, when people weren't thinking about this necessarily, you know, first and foremost. I have had people reach out to me about a citizens review board, so I would like to work with you on this. And also, more generally, I would like to say, kind of to Counselor Ricketts' statements, that I have people reaching out to me talking about defunding police officers. And I have a lot of police officers in my family. And I understand that there are, you know, there are some police officers who need to be out there enforcing the law. If someone breaks into my house, I want to be able to call someone and I want that person to show up. I don't necessarily need that person to be arresting a 17-year-old black kid for smoking a joint the next afternoon, right? And I think that there is a spot in the middle where we can have really strong anti-racist practices, where we still have law enforcement, where our police officers are enforcing the law, and where social workers are dealing with social work. And where educators are dealing with education, where psychiatrists are dealing with, you know, people who have behavioral problems. And I think that we can find that solution in the middle. And I would also like to reach out to you, Counselor Ricketts, and talk more about that. And I'll end my comments there.
Thank you. Counselor Jarvis, please.
Thank you, Ashley. Yeah, I just like, you know, I hear all the comments about defunding and stuff like that. I just want people to realize that a lot of times our police officers are the first ones to come in contact with the public. And to take away funding for training and all the ologies for them, sociology, physiology, doesn't really make too much sense to me. I mean, we want them to be compassionate. I don't think, I don't think any of them want to be social workers. But they also have to know how to handle the situation. And I, for one, believe that maybe more funding to help the officers understand and handle the situations better is a good solution and should be looked at also. Just a few thoughts on it. We want our officers to be educated and continuing ed. This is the way to do it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sure, Counselor Gilmore?
Yes, I just wanted to respond to Counselor Jarvis. So like I outlined earlier, I do come from a family of law enforcement officials. I myself am a veteran. I also see myself as being extremely far to the left. And I don't think there are many people in Greenfield who see me otherwise. I get what you're saying. We want our police officers to respond to emergencies. We want our police officers to quote-unquote, catch bad guys. I think the problem is that we're trying to treat police officers like social workers. You know, if there is a homeless person who's bothering a business owner, we want to call the police. If there are suspicious teenagers wandering around in the store, we want to just call the police. If there is, you know, any kind of uncomfortable interaction, we just want to call the police and the police are just gonna take care of it. And not only is that unfair to people of color, it's also unfair to our police, if you think about it, right? Police officers are, you know, I know that my uncle, my grandfather, my cousins got into this because they wanted to protect people. I don't think they got into this because they wanted to beat up on people of color. I think that there are some of their colleagues who are making, you know, you know, one bad apple kind of spoils the bunch, right? So there are some people who are making police officers look bad right now, and we need to acknowledge that. We need to address that. But if we're gonna support good police officers, we need to take certain things out of their job description. Good police officers don't need to be social workers. Good police officers don't need to be behavioral therapists. They don't need to be educators. They don't need to be, you know, they don't need to intervene with, you know, substance use disorders. We need to put these things on professionals who are trained to handle that specific issue. It's a long conversation. It's not as easy as just like cutting the police budget. It's not as easy as just saying, oh, police officers are bad and we're just gonna get rid of police officers. This has to be like a critical line-by-line look at what the job description is for a police officer. And we, it's a conversation that we need to have, and it's something we need to have in Greenfield.
Thank you. I do not see any other comments. So I will let Counselor Jarvis respond, but this is under new business, so this isn't gonna become a debate tonight. So Counselor Jarvis, you may respond, and then I'm gonna move on to see if anyone else wants to speak, and then we'll move on.
Yeah, I wasn't gonna make it a debate. I was just clarifying. I just wanted to clarify that I just wanted to say that a lot of times they were the first ones on the scene, that we should have them have some sort of training. That's all. I wasn't gonna make it a debate. That'll be for another time.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing nobody else, we will move to motions for reconsideration. Seeing none. And lastly, before we do adjourn, I actually think our last conversation under new business is very appropriate for the prelude into a closing moment of silence, please. And as I mentioned earlier in the meeting, this is for George Floyd, but those before him and those certainly after him. If we don't find some way to make change, and so this was a good first start, let's continue this. I know people are sick of discussion and they want action now. But to have lasting, meaningful change, to move forward, discussion's important. And I know I'll commit to learning and listening because I know that that's my role with my place of white privilege. And so with that being said, may we please have a moment of silence? Thank you, everybody. May we continue this work and be open to listening, stepping back when we need to step back and stepping forward when we need to step forward in being truthful and honest and asking questions and being vulnerable. That will be where we are tonight. And like I said, I look forward to continuing this work with all of you. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Moves.
Elmer.
Second, Ricketts.
Moved by who?
Elmer.
Rick.
Moved by Elmer, seconded by Ricketts. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Any abstentions? The motion, I mean, motion passes, I suppose. And the meeting will be adjourned tonight at 10:06 PM. Thank you to all of you. Thank you to the community. And I look forward to continuing the work. Thank you. Have a great.